Good thing I'm right in front of my house.
We'll just call the study session to order a minute early. Oh, no, according to my watch, it's 6:01. Exactly, we're late. So we'll get an update on our website accessibility and we have Georgie Sharp.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of City Council, Assistant City Attorney Evan King, and I will be giving you a web accessibility update tonight. I just want to acknowledge and thank Laura City Clerk Gillespie for all of her work on this large project that we've started last year. So to begin with, the House bill was enacted in 2021. It is HB 21-1110. The Governor's Office of Information Technology has adopted the rules that establish the technology accessibility standards, and those rules were adopted last February in 2024. Those requirements, they have defined what that entails, and they define information and communication technology ICT as computers, equipment, videos, website, software, application, and electronic documents. Those also include emails. And then the rules for ICT to be accessible, that would be external-facing, internal-facing, any communication information technology that's procured, developed, maintained by the city, and then ICT that is in active use, which is definition that Evan provided on the study session memo on the bottom of page two. She also provided the five, listed the five safe harbors in the memo, so I didn't list them here. And we are in a grace period from July of last year to July of this year. So the Governor's Office, from 2021 to 2024, there was a lot of uncertainty as to what standards the state would adopt. So this slide goes through the Web Content Accessibility Guidelines, also known as WCAG. There's lots of acronyms. And they use the four principles: poor, so perceivable, operable, understandable, and robust. And then with the WCAG, there are several versions and then levels within those versions. So in bold is 2.1. That was released in 2018, and that is the standard that the state identified as the standard for our accessibility ICT standards to meet. So we are supposed to meet 2.1 at a level AA. The theory with WCAG is that if you meet 2.1, theoretically, you've met all the standards of 2.0 because these guidelines build upon one another. So last year, we accomplished several items. We created and posted the Technology Accessibility Plan, the Technology Accessibility Statement, which is posted on the website. We have implemented web accessibility improvements into the 2025 city budget. We've currently audited and tested 75% of the city web pages, and I'll go into a little bit more detail further on what that means. We have also remediated PDF documents, about 23, including the master plan, which you all know is a guiding document and a very large document. So that took up quite a bit of the budget that we had allocated funds for last year because it's a very large document, and we outsourced that to a service provided through our city website provider. We also created an accessibility committee, and through those committee meetings, we provide quarterly updates. And then we have trained seven of our staff members who regularly post or edit content onto the city's website in web accessibility standards. So that was roughly 20 hours of their time that they found time to do, in addition to all the other duties that they're assigned. Goals for this year, we are updating the Technology Accessibility Plan. Pages five through nine is the list of ICT vendors and software and equipment. It's broken down by external and internal, so we'll be updating that. We have posted the report for 2024 accomplished items. We'll audit and test the remaining web pages using a third-party source called WebAim. It's provided through Utah State University. And with those reports that they compile for us, we'll determine the appropriate delegation of duties. So if there's easy fixes that the staff can take on to fix those or remediate those issues, we'll look there. We'll also look to the several website host providers that we use for any coding issues that would be on the back end. And then our IT, we have our outsourced IT company that may have some duties or responsibilities before looking at any additional outside contract services. We're going to continue our accessibility committee meetings and our progress reports, and then continue to remediate the other PDF documents that are available on the website.
What does that mean, remediate PDF documents?
Fix. So with PDF documents, mostly what they're looking to do is, Alliant is a software company. They have provided us with licenses for Common Look. It's a pretty widely-used source that other municipalities and public entities are using. It basically tags a PDF so that it's the structure and the navigation for someone who may not be able to click with a mouse. They can navigate through, or more likely, it's a screen reader, so they can't view the document, but the screen reader goes through and speech output. Yeah, absolutely.
So it's speech output, then? In other words, you can hear it?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was curious about that, about, you know, how people that are blind, so that's what's going on there, is it's reading it back to you?
Yep. They're typically called screen readers. There's several. There's a few that are open source, so they're available with web browser extensions. I'm sure there's others that people purchase to help them navigate websites.
Right, right.
Similarly, if there is a video, don't we have to, it wouldn't be a PDF, but don't we have to?
Yes, provide closed captioning or a translation, transcripts. Mostly what, Evan can speak to this probably better than I can, it's whatever we can provide or make accessible or provide in an alternative format. So if there's a video and a transcription is the most appropriate method as a way to communicate the information.
And is 100% of the content that we have up eventually required to be remediated, or is there some judgment around that?
Unless it falls within one of those safe harbors, if the ICT falls in the eligible accessibility, so, you know, it's ours, it's made by us, it's on our website, and it's an active user created after July 1, 2024, it's required to be accessible. So ideally, yes, everything on the website will be. Of course, before the rules came into effect, they didn't have any exception for active use, so it was archived. So a lot of municipalities were just pulling things off their website because it would be impossible to make archived material accessible. I mean, we're talking like handwritten notes from like a mayor in the 1900 or something like that. So it was like, no. So those things weren't. So there might be some older documents that we keep on for historic purposes that don't necessarily need to be accessible, but I would say 99% of the website should be accessible.
How do they, I can see, you know, like, for instance, like, there's 2025 goals, update the technology, you know, you can hear that, right? They're reading out numbers off of the budget like that? I mean, I would imagine the financial statements are, it would be as confusing hearing it verbally written, read off, or talked to you.
Well, your cell phone has a handy accessibility function, and in the training, they tell you, go to the settings and turn on the accessibility. And then I accidentally turned off my screen, trying to figure out how to get back to shut it off so that I could get into my phone was very difficult for me. These folks that use these assistive technologies, they're much...
Adapte at it.
Yeah, much more. It was a nightmare. But it's hard to say. So for our budget document, we actually, that's one of the websites we haven't gotten to yet. And part of that is because it is a third-party source. But within that third-party source is another third-party that they use to create those wonderful graphics and tables that we have. So currently, right now, we have three ClearGov budget documents, but they're each a different website. So the organization we've been using, they test per host. So we kind of saved that one for last, just because I think we're going to have to do it three times. It is somewhat affordable. It's anywhere between $500 and $600 for each testing site. So our main website is about 300 pages. That was $500 because we could easily pull up an Excel spreadsheet and send it to them. Here are the list of pages. Our Crime Watch website that PD uses to communicate was about 55 pages. And because it's a different website host, we had to pay another fee. But when Laura and I started to audit and manually test the web pages between the two of us, we barely scratched this. I mean, it is very time-consuming, whereas these folks can run through, I think it's up to 20,000 pages relatively quickly. And they provide us a nice report that says, here are the issues, here's where we recommend you start. I'll get into a little bit of that, but it's quite a rabbit hole.
So you have your plan for which ones you're going to do. Have you been sidetracked by many forums, online forums? Have very many people submitted those forums to say, I am having trouble with accessing this, or, you know, asking for accommodations or whatever. I did click through that.
Yeah, no, that's great. So as we weren't, we were trying to exclude the ADA, but the federal ADA, they require that we have an ADA coordinator. I am the designated ADA coordinator. And since we, our insurance company has given us direction and guidance to focus on certain aspects to make sure that we are doing the things that we're supposed to do, the only questions I've gotten on the ADA pertain around COVID, and then also come from Denver, the Cherry Creek area, they find us, they call our PD and ask for questions because they think Cherry Hills and Cherry Creek are the same. So most of my requests have come from apartment buildings in Cherry Creek, and I just help guide them to the correct site in Denver of where they really should direct their complaint. So no, we haven't gotten any requests for the web accessibility.
That's great.
Sorry, I lost my train of thought. So this is just a high-level overview of the methodology that Laura and I have been using. So it's just an image of our main website, and we have basically been working backwards to try to fix any issues of all of our content that's already posted using WebAim and using Alliant, as well as going forward, that was the focus of training our staff, so that any new content that goes up on the website is, to the best of our ability, accessible. Yes, yes. I don't know. This is just a snapshot of the report because it is very lengthy. So this is a snapshot of the results for our main city page. Again, it's about 300 pages. It is, number three is our total score out of 10, which is an average from the automated and the manual. So the manual testing is, again, any keyboard, screen reader, navigation-type structure of the website. And automated accessibility is looking at color contrast, it's looking at headings, alternative text. So in the last slide with our image of the park with the trees, that image doesn't necessarily give off any, we're not keeping them from any information, but it should have on the coding end a description that says it's just decorative. So those are the things that the automated testing is testing. Another thing to note is that because our main page is 300 pages, a lot of those issues are on every single page. So, for example, color contrast, using red and green is not ideal for someone with low vision or color blindness. So a 6.6, because we have 43% of our errors are color contrast, that's through 300 pages. So the more pages, the more issues that are typically found, the same issues throughout the number of web pages. So we have a little bit better of a score with Crime Watch. It's about 55 pages. Again, our automated score has a lot to do with color contrast. For them, the issues are about 57%. So using the reds and the grays, which the hope and theory is we can interact with Crime Watch or Civic Plus and say, help us fix the coding, and, you know, as nicely as I would like to think, they can fix that coding throughout all of the web pages, and that score will jump up hopefully rather quickly. And then another example is Civic Gov, which is our community development, building permit page. As you can see, this looks much better, but there's only six pages. So in comparison, yes, good job, Paul. However... I guess.
It's just an evaluation of the total package that we offer, not the number of pages.
So glad we waited for that. So just to give you a snapshot, we have pages upon pages for all of us to go through, and that's what we'll be focusing on in our next quarterly accessibility committee of how we tackle and make things better on our website. Again, focusing, we've focused on the external-facing items and not the internal, based on many reasons. Tell me.
Are there any guideline, are you trying to get to a nine, or is an eight acceptable, or how are you thinking about it?
So that is a tricky thing with accessibility, when you change something to make it accessible for one group. It is very possible that you somehow, without knowledge, exclude another. So I don't know what a good benchmark is quite yet because of that tricky issue.
And when you hit on that, that was one of the things I didn't note in the stat- And when you hit on that, that was one of the things I did note in, in the statute as well. They talk about best efforts, which, as you know, has got a legal connotation. Best efforts is best efforts. And I'm going, I can't imagine that they mean that. Because best efforts, hey, million bucks, we, we got it. Spend it. Best efforts. So there must be, there must have been some administrative overview or what have you and regulatory guidance that basically says, we don't really mean that at the end of the day. Make your reasonable, reasonable efforts to accommodate and accomplish these objectives.
I think that's also what the safe harbors are for, kind of explaining what best efforts are. It's that, you know, there's gonna be things that you just can't make accessible, and we understand that. But it has to fit neatly within one of these safe harbors. The legislation wasn't written great. It was, it's, it was bad. It was bad. It had a lot of people panicking. The rules changed like eight hundred times vastly. You know, they, they, like, as you mentioned, they, they promulgated the rules and finalized the rules in February. And we were all supposed to comply with it in July. And then they kind of like panicked and gave us a grace period of the year. So I wouldn't be shocked if there's something in the legislative session to try and fix this a little bit. I think ideally, what people would like to see, what I would like to see is instead of just jumping into a lawsuit, allowing like the government to try and fix the issue before we go straight to a lawsuit. That's not in the law yet, but I am hopeful that it will change. But to your point, I don't think that they really thought through what best efforts really meant.
Well, with that amount of time, though, to grant the, in essence, the extension, the one year, did everybody have to submit something that basically says, these are our best efforts or what you had gone over, Catherine? So that you could turn around and get, in essence, a one-year window to continue to work? Or how was?
So they did have measures, which were the accessibility plan and putting the statement on and providing quarterly report, you know, that were showing some path forward. Those were the requirements that I know of.
But there's no formal designation that they give to you that says you have a one-year stay versus you just showing them that you've been doing your good faith efforts.
All these things, yeah. Yep, as far as I know.
Correct. It just, you know, it wouldn't have prevented someone from suing us if something on our website wasn't.
So it's a defense, but not.
But they, yeah, it was a defense, but it wasn't anything affirm, you know, we couldn't prevent lawsuits. I just think the people who are probably gonna bring lawsuits knew it wasn't worth their time. Because, you know, it was a relatively low bar to post an accessibility plan, have a reporting remediation requirement and stuff like that. So it barred, I, I think people just didn't want to waste their time. They're just gonna wait until July one of this year.
I, I guess the hope with ADA is that they, they give you the chance to, to go through a process and try to resolve, whether that's finding a different alternative method of providing, in this case, information. And so what I think our staff does really well is, is provide customer service and try to find a way to, to get people the information that they're looking for in whatever format works for, for them. So I, I guess that's what I'm hopeful for, is that we already have that culture, we already have that mindset built into the daily tasks that we're already completing.
So all of that raises the question for me around, as you mentioned, the way a lot of other communities have approached this is to just take stuff off their website. And you have to go ask for it, and they provide it to you in whatever form you want. But they don't have to go through and kind of retroactively change everything. And particularly as we look at all of our meeting minutes, and so now we don't have to go back to the beginning of time, we only have to start with January or July one, twenty twenty-four?
Unless something that was created before July one, twenty twenty-four is an active use, which is, they define as you need it to get services.
Okay. So like minutes and whatever would not.
Minutes in like older ordinances, probably not. I would, I would keep those on. I don't think, I think that's a relatively low risk. Something like the budget I've been telling all clients to have, because people do use those to look back on. So those kinds of things. And then, of course, if someone asks for something to make it accessible, we then have a duty to not only make it accessible for that person, but to then post an accessible version of it. I do also just want to mention that our vendors are kind of behind the times in it. We do have things in our professional service agreements saying that they're gonna indemnify us for web accessibility issues. We were getting a lot of pushback on it, but vendors have started to come around. I think a lot of other states are implementing very similar rules. The federal government was talking about doing basically this exact same thing for everyone. So I think in the future, this won't be as much of an issue, and our vendors will just be providing things that are accessible. It's just a short interim time of kind of catching up on it. That's gonna be really the bear, the burden some part.
Well, so talk a little bit more then about the videos.
Okay. So these videos, these videos are already streamed through Open Media and the YouTube channel. So the benefits of YouTube are they, they already have a lot of the closed captioning and the transcribing already built in. So they're.
What about the, does that happen in the recordings as well?
I believe there's an option when you view the recording on the website for.
For closed captioning.
For the closed captioning, yes. So it, it needs to be reviewed. It, I'm sure it's not at the highest standard, but right now, it, it doesn't feel as big of a risk. But it, it's something that, yes, we, we have to progressively move towards. To your point with the agendas and the minutes, City Clerk Gillespie, she's already created templates with the Common Look software, where all the tags and the screen reader would be able to move correctly through the document. So already trying to create those templates because it's, it's a lot of, I don't want to say copy and paste, but she uses that document for the future documents, so.
Yeah. Well, I, I just mentioned that because, I guess, kind of for the benefit of almost everybody, except maybe Earl. We only started streaming meetings when we moved into this building. We didn't have that capability in our other building. And we did keep audio recordings, and those were the official meetings, but they weren't available online. If you wanted to listen to the audio of a meeting, you came into City Hall and listened to it there. And, you know, the, the decision was made to stream and to post that online and make it available in the interest of transparency and, and making it more accessible to people. But if it's turning into a no-good deed goes unpunished, then we, I think that changes the, that was never contemplated and part of the decision to do that in the first place. And so I, you know, if it becomes onerous and costly to continue to post those recorded videos online, or that would be something I think we would think about. And then I, again, just want to throw out for not making any suggestions, but the constitutionality of this law is actually a little bit questionable. And so I think that obviously we want to provide services to everyone in our community, including people with disabilities. But to the extent that this starts to become cost prohibitive, the Colorado State Constitution has, I guess, in two separate places, prohibitions against unfunded mandates, which this certainly is. I don't know that this is a hill to die on right now. It's, but just want to throw it out.
One, one question, Evan, when, when you were answering Katie's first question, you use the phrase, if it's necessary for someone to get services. What, what, what is that in reference to?
That's, so that's directly in the rules of active use, what the definition, definition of active use is. So if you look at the rules, it will say, active use includes anything that's needed, any ICT that's needed to, for a person to get benefits or services. So, I mean, I think of like.
Well, well, like, for instance, well, yeah, I mean, and I get that. I mean, I understand what that means. You don't need, you don't need to access the master plan in order to get services, as an example. That's why I'm asking, how far does that go? You know, I get that, in order to get services from the city, which makes perfect sense.
Yep.
There's a boatload of stuff on that website that, it's informational. It is not necessary, nor is it even important in order to get the services that the city provides.
True. I think that's, that's a good point, that maybe it wouldn't be active use. But then again, you also have the, the, the problem there is that if someone asks for the master plan to be made accessible, you have to make it accessible. So I think a lot of it is also us trying to tell our clients to get ahead of the game. You know you're gonna have to make this huge master plan accessible at some point, because someone's gonna ask.
So, so it's, if it's necessary in order to, necessary to receive services, or if somebody asks for it.
Or if someone asks for it. And like, you know the master plan's gonna be asked for, you know the budgets are gonna be asked for, so let's just do them now.
Well, I'd almost say that something like the master plan is something that is a, you know, organic document that we look at and making a lot of our decisions. So it isn't almost by definition an active document. But, you know, for instance, the construction contracts for this building, it's here, it's now, it's probably past any statute of limitations. You know, those are probably not active and ongoing documents, those type of things. That it's really documents that allow us to do our jobs, whether it's at the staff level or even at council level.
So Mayor, I think your comments were spot on. And I wonder, how are we monitoring or managing the cost? Is it within the budget? Is that how you're thinking about it? And if something was outside of the budget, you would need to come back to Chris and then to council for approval? Or how, is that a way that we've kind of scoped this cost?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's how we've done it. And in the, you know, staff memo, it says that we have, it's thirty thousand dollars for this coming year.
Yes, current.
And I don't know what we've spent to date. Do you know what we've spent to date?
So we have spent eighteen hundred just on the remediation, the, the website testing. So we, the purpose of the website.
One thousand eight hundred?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
The purpose of the website testing is to, for us to figure out, where, where do we go next? Where's the focus? Where's the need? What, what can we reasonably take on as staff? And what we found when we started this process is it, it is just a large scope project. And it can't be done in one week or one month. So, and the website's constantly changing. So, you know, focusing on the PD website was a priority because the purpose of the PD website is to communicate to our residents what's happening in the ci, you know. So each, each thing that we've focused on, you could say is, is high pre, it, it's just, it's really hard to, to, to focus sometimes because it just feels like such a large endeavor. But we've, we've made our open records request form in three different formats, I think, on the website. Because last year was a very highly requested service. So you try, you know, the rec reimbursement form is a top priority because it's a service that we provide the residents to receive.
Catherine, how much of your time are you spending on this? And, and do you have any idea how much Floris' time is being spent on this?
I don't know because we have, originally, we were setting aside Friday mornings. We're just gonna focus on what we can do in two hours. But as things happen with our, for me, the year, the end of the year and the beginning of the year, I haven't looked at the web accessibility stuff, which is why I feel a little rusty on the, the terms. Because in August, I was ready to go and I could bust out these acronyms for you. But now it's been six months since I've really dove into this particular project. So I can't, I can put a number on the, the training. I think I've probably spent thirty hours in training alone. But the training has helped us provide a path of, okay, where do we go from here? It helped us find free training for our staff through the W three C organization. So there, there are free resources out there that we're trying to take advantage of, but it, it's just such a large scope project. I, I couldn't say.
Yeah, one, one quick question. I know we gotta, you know, our technical, our, our technical accessibility plan says that we will appoint an accessibility officer. I know we created an accessibility committee. Who's the accessibility officer? Presume you.
Laura and I, for, for web accessibility. I'm the ADA coordinator, which is the federal. So it's a little confusing, but we felt for this to point people, just because Laura is so outwardly facing in her duties as city clerk. She's also manages the website. So that is why she kind of got roped into this and I'm the ADA.
No, no, yeah, I get that. So she's the accessibility officer.
We, we both are, for, for web accessibility.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying, it was our plan, our plan that was put together that says we will appoint an accessibility officer. And I'm just saying, it's our plan, so did we do it.
Yep, it, it's, it's on page.
I never saw it. Was it in there?
Page fourteen, it says, identify point personnel and accountability party. We listed as ongoing because it can shift, but it says the current point people are the city clerk and the human resource manager.
All right. So we do need to move on to our meeting, but I, I guess I just wanted to wrap up. And as a follow-up, Doug, to your comments, the budget is the way this is sort of wrangled. And eighteen hundred dollars is certainly well within, you know, a reasonable expenditure to make these services available to the public. Thirty thousand dollars is more money. It's not gonna break the bank. But as, this is just something to be on your radar as we move forward with our budgeting process. At what point do we feel that we have made our, I'm not gonna use best effort because that's a legal term, but reasonable efforts, appropriate efforts? And, you know, how far down this rabbit hole, because it is a very deep one.
Hey, what would Elon Musk say?
I, I think I'd know, yeah. Yeah, already. Okay. So with that, it is six thirty-six PM, and I will call to order the regularly scheduled council meeting. Will the person acting as the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Heller.
Here.
Councilmember Eber.
Here.
Mayor Protem Holan.
Here.
Councilmember McGuire.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
And Councilmember Fisher.
Here.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Audience participation, there is no one here, there are no members of boards and commissions. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
There is no consent agenda.
There's no consent agenda.
Right. No, I guess we didn't.
No. Nothing in mine.
Yeah.
I know, there weren't.
Okay.
We're two, two meetings behind that.
Right. My guess is that she hasn't finished it yet.
So we're going on down to reports, I guess. I'll try to keep my report quick. Tomorrow, I will be down at the Capitol for the committee hearing for House Bill twenty-five, eleven sixty-nine, otherwise known as Yes in God's Backyard. And we'll be testifying in opposition to that bill. Today, the voting, the Colorado Voting Rights Act, which is Senate Bill one, which signifies that it's a huge priority for the majority during this session. And of course, nobody is opposed to voting rights. The problem with Senate Bill one is that it basically takes over local municipal elections, which is, you know, our election process is defined in our charter. It's not even something that we could change if we wanted to. You know, according to CML, Senate Bill one is completely unconstitutional. And I would refer to our city attorney, there's evidently quite a bit of case law.
That's my understanding. It'd be great if I didn't have to know more about it.
But, so I think the, the position of CML, I think everybody realizes that's going to pass in some form. It's their top priority. But they're trying to amend, to get amendments that exclude municipal elections since that is clearly the purview of a home rule municipality. So things are getting crazy down there at the Capitol.
Mayor, so the yes, and that bill is that the churches could construct apartments or dwell. or dwellings on their property?
Yes. And it is, you know, I'll say this, the sky, the sky isn't necessarily falling. It is a very poorly written bill. And there, even if it passes, there will be opportunities, I think. But the, they're allowed to build housing with administrative approval, not subject to any zoning. And it, we can't deny applications because of a height restriction, as long as the highest building in the development is no more than three stories tall, and I think a maximum of 45 feet. And I believe that our, we have 30 foot, right? So it's, it's not-
Yeah, the tallest we would allow is 35 feet.
Right, 35. So it would be, we, this would force us to allow 10 feet more. I mean, it would, it's not great, but it's not, you know, a skyscraper right next door.
Are we also not limited to two stories?
Uh, two stories for a single-family home, and we don't have a zone district that would allow-
And I'm not gonna go through all the details of the poorly written elements of it, because I wouldn't want anybody to fix them. But I think there would be room for us to push back. And feel free to call me and I'll tell you what I think. Keeping in mind that I'm not an attorney. So, the other question that I wanted to bring up, and I, but actually, I think I'll put this off, because we're talking about changing it. As it stands right now, so our next meeting is our retreat on March 4th during the day. We don't currently have anything scheduled on the agenda for the meeting that evening, the regularly scheduled council meeting that evening. We do have a few items on the March, what would that be, 18th meeting? And I have asked if it would be possible, and City Manager's gonna look into this, I asked him today, if it would be possible to move those items to the 4th, since we're all already here. And then we could potentially cancel the meeting on the 18th if nothing came up. So he's looking into that. There is currently a hearing scheduled for the, the meeting on the 18th, and so we're not positive if that can be moved or not. So stay tuned.
What's the hearing there?
It's the Kent application for, yeah, for the new, not the lights, but the new weight room facility and wellness center. But I just don't know if they can, if they're prepared, you know, they have to attend that meeting, and I don't know if, anyway. So we'll see if we're able to move that to March 4th. So stay tuned. And we'll start down here, council reports. Councilor Fisher?
No report, Mayor.
I have a brief report. I attended the opioid council abatement hearing. We are actively soliciting grant applicants. So if you are personally aware of, and includes the staff too, of any particularly successful substance abuse treatment programs, especially any that are targeted towards youth, or any prevention programs, let me know. Thank you.
I just have one thing to talk about. Kevin Iverson, who is a constituent of mine, has requested that we consider recording the council retreat. For people's information, we do record city council meetings and the study sessions. Under the open meeting laws, my understanding is that we are required to record the council meeting, or to keep an electronic, keep an electronic record that we do by video recording.
If formal action is potential, which is not typically at work sessions or whatever, and I think-
And we historically, Councilman Gallagher, my predecessor, asked that we record the study sessions, because they were often referred to in the council meetings immediately afterwards. We do not record and are not required to record the retreats, because we don't take formal action in those. Mr. Iverson has said, "My reason for asking is simply wanting to know what is going on with my city government. This city has continually said it wants its residents to know what's going on, and the city does a great job of making it easy for the residents via the videos of council meeting and study sessions," among other things. "And providing videos of the council retreat would be a continuation of this." I told Mr. Iverson I would bring his request to council. Obviously, not something that we decide on in this, but if people wanna think about that, I'm letting you know of that request.
Yes. And I know there is no plan to do that at our March 4th council retreat, but certainly could be something that would be up for discussion.
Thank you.
No report.
Councilor Eber?
No report, thank you.
Councilor Heller?
Just one quick item. Michael Ott, a constituent in District 3, I think might have talked to the mayor and Mayor Protem about whether council would consider the pickleball ma-, I think this is the proper way to describe it, model, set of rules. So I'd like to raise that with council and see if that's something. I talked to the city manager about what the procedure is, she said raise it here and see if council's willing to take it up. He was very polite, and obviously has some interest, because I think he's one of the folks that, and Glenmore lives very close to where the potential pickleball court may be. But in any event, the ask is, at some point, no, you know, urgency to it, can we take that up? And maybe it's a yes or a no, but at least discuss whether the model-
So, and you'll probably remember that he did come address the council at the last council meeting. So yes, the process for things like that, when, when a constituent brings something forward, we can't, and we all, not that any of us have done this, but we know that we can't just send staff off on tangents at the request of one individual or one council member. And so the, the best way to handle that is that we've brought those things up kind of during this forum, and just get a sense of whether or not the rest of the council is supportive of even asking staff to prepare information, or is it just something that we aren't, aren't gonna consider at that time? The, what I will say is that we did have, and I don't remember exactly when, but we have discussed, was it when you were on council?
Yeah, it was in the last, last two years.
Two years.
All prepared up.
Yeah, we, we did discuss, yeah, pickleballs and pickle, and what we should do. And it was during the time when Centennial was going through their process, which was extremely contentious. And I, the action, I guess at the time, the council just decided that our current model of considering requests in their individual context was, in fact, the best way to go. There were not many, there's not even many opportunities for pickleball courts, and so there wouldn't be more than, you know, 10, I would guess, potential applicants. So when you think of the clubs and the-
Well, but I think when, when we had the session on it, the focus more were, was on individual homeowners having pickleball courts in their backyard, as opposed to, like say, a tennis court.
Right.
And it was a noise, a noise issue was, was how it was looked at at the time, and we, we discussed, you know, I think the way the noise ordinances right now, if it's at a certain decibel level for an extended period of time, and it really doesn't address intermittent noise, which is kind of the irritant in the pickleball scenario, right? It's a one, one second noise that goes on for a long time.
Yeah.
So it was, it wasn't, Mr. Ott's talking about, I think, a different scenario, right, with the club doing it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't read the Centennial model, so I could be wrong about, but I think it is principally aimed at clubs and public places like that. In any event, so the question was, at some future time?
Yes, and so I guess that is the question, is, so as background, within the last two years, the council did discuss pickleball courts and whether additional regulation was necessary, and chose at that time not to take any action. And so the question then to this council is, do you want to reconsider that and discuss it yourselves? Or, I see one head nodding, I see-
Well, and I have a question, I, not, not from pickleball, but from some other, something else, and I can't remember what it was during my first term, but when councils undertaking, actively undertaking, promulgating a new ordinance covering something, that, at that point in time, it's permissible then for the municipality, in this case, the city, to basically then put into obedience licensing anything further that might fall under that particular, that particular issue?
You're talking about imposing a moratorium?
Yeah, moratorium.
And the moratorium typically is, we're going to be considering regulations on this.
Right.
There's, it's not ad infinitum, right? It's sort of a defined, somewhat within the law, period of time by which you have a clock ticking and you are considering actively pursuing refining, adopting, or rejecting regulations. And you say that for that time period, we're not going to be doing that. I believe that's how Centennial handled theirs.
I think they did.
That's my understanding.
Yep, yep. And I think they did a white paper or study on some things, and took full advantage of the time, I believe. But that would be one consideration, if that's something that you, you know, you wanted to impose. I'm not aware of that being done here in Cherry Hills Village in many years, but that has, really doesn't mean anything. It is a tool available to you. And I think that it is important to note that, given our current ordinances, we do still have the ability, authority to consider, people would have to come to council to request, would, would a resident have to come to council, Paul?
Not a resident, but the private clubs would.
Yeah. Would have to come to council to request pickleball courts. And we do have the authority to consider the factors like whether it's consistent with the use, the surrounding uses, and et cetera, et cetera. So this isn't to say, just because we don't have a pickleball ordinance, doesn't mean we cannot either approve or deny pickleball courts, or regulate them at that time. I do think that the, I guess as it stands now, if somebody wanted to build a pickleball court in their backyard, much like a tennis court, they would just have to meet the setbacks and the-
That's correct. As, as part of the conversation you had alluded to earlier, one of the directions that we did get from council is, when we do get applications for, for a pickleball, when we know it's a pickleball court, just like we would tell them that they're responsible for getting the approval of their HOA, they are responsible for being compliant with the city's noise ordinance, and we tell them what that noise ordinance is. So, yeah. But it is, our residential lot, it is just a building permit, like a tennis court or basketball court, or any of those other-
And it's considered an accessory structure?
It's considered a recreational structure, just like those other ones.
And there are limits on the number and the number of the square foot totals for footage-
The number, where it can be on the lot, all that sort of stuff. That's correct.
Yeah, so Mayor, I, just to clarify to you, I'm not taking a position pro or-
No.
-on the regulation. But if it's a light task for staff, and there's a light agenda day, I think my ask sort of is, could we go through this very discussion? What are the pros and cons of an ordinance versus the way we currently regulate it?
Sure.
As opposed to doing a bunch of research on the actual, you know, different regulations or model rules?
Right.
So, just wanted to clarify, I'm not taking a-
No, I, thank you for clarifying. And that is, the, the question really is just, is that something that we want to discuss as a council? Yes, Councilor Fisher?
So I'm aware of some HOAs who handle this within their neighborhoods as well, and have, you know, particular paddles that you're allowed to use, and particular times, and particular balls, and all that kind of thing. And I think maybe HOAs can change those rules a little more nimbly. And, you know, somebody who lives around that there might say, I'll be the person who continues to research, as Mr. Ott mentioned, as, you know, paddles and balls keep getting invented that are better, right? That are better if the noise bothers you. So that's another thing to think about.
Yeah.
Is maybe some cities would prefer for their, for the HOAs to do it.
Yeah, to handle that on a, you know, I do, I think that there is, personally, I guess I would say that while I absolutely understand Mr., and I think it's, is it Otti? I think he pronounces the E at the end. But I absolutely understand his concern. I think that we can better serve and better accommodate our residents by having the flexibility to consider the specifics of an individual case, rather than trying to put some universal regulations, because I feel like once you create universal regulations, then you're sort of tied to those. And those are the expectation, and there are always exceptions, there's always unintended consequences, and it's much more difficult to regulate to the unique circumstances of that request. So I personally think we can better serve even his purposes by keeping our ordinances the way they are.
And Mayor, if I may add to that, just as a refresher for those that weren't on council at the time, right, the private clubs that would require the site plan amendment approval from council, there's five of them, right? There's Cherry Hills Country Club, there's Glenmore Village Club, Rappahoe Tennis Club, and the Buell. And so those are the five that, that would fall in the site plan amendment process. And at the time, that council, not saying that this council has to agree with that, the council felt like that in those five scenarios, they could be more effective for their residents by taking the merits of the request at the time, as opposed to having regulations that would really only apply to five properties.
Could it also be the schools? Kent, St. Mary's, you know, public schools?
Potentially, not the public schools, but the private schools.
Yeah. And I would think maybe even the churches. I know they have, like, Brave has a gym, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah. That, that one could get-
I guess from my perspective, and I agree, I mean, I'm always against having a regulation if we don't have to have it. But there is the flip side to that, which is, and when we have, like you say, the flexibility, my experience with councils is, is they get always hung up with precedent all the time, and most of the time, they end up rolling over. And that's a problem. Now, in reality, we don't have a lot of applications. And by the way, if we were to take it up, one of the questions presumably is, are we taking this up just for, for our institutions? Are we taking it up across the board? And that would seem logical to me, but, but we also don't have a lot of applications. To my knowledge, we don't have a lot of people putting them in. But if that ever started coming down the pike, I think we, I think at that, I think at that point in time, we'd wanna have, we would have, we would have wanted to have had regulations. Because I think that we'd end up feeling like, there ain't much we can do about this.
So the only thing I would add to that is, we do currently have regulations where the setbacks, the number, and that sort of stuff. We just don't have anything specific to pickleball. We treat pickleball courts the same as any other recreational court.
Right. And that, and that's, let's face it, that's the issue. Okay, that's, that, that is, that is the issue.
Right.
There is no noise like pickleball, okay? Tennis doesn't come close. Just doesn't. I mean, I got a tennis court right next to me, and they play tennis all the time, and you know, you hear it. But it ain't, it ain't like pickleball. I mean, that's like a machine gun. It's like, so I'm just saying. But the good news is, we haven't had to address it, and it hasn't come up. But if it ever did, you know, we probably at that point in time would have wished, we would have addressed it, be my guess.
So, I mean, and I guess my, that, to, to be the flip side of that, Earl, is that the problem with creating those regulations is that if they meet those regulations, you basically have to say yes.
Right. I mean, yeah.
And so can you foresee and predict every scenario where it would not be appropriate, and, and write those regulations to allow yourself the opportunity to say no, when it in fact is, is not a consistent use? And that's a philosophical question, and I think to- And that's a philosophical question, and I think to Councilor Heller's point, you know, so am I getting a thumbs up that we want to have this more in-depth discussion?
Yeah, just to reiterate, those are very questions that we might bash around. And I think I owe the whole council an apology, because this was a short agenda night.
No, no, well, no, no, we're, we're good, we're good.
I mean, I would go a little bit on the other side of saying that, you know, I am a little bit nervous about specifically addressing pickleball, that while it may or may not have some unique features to wanting to target pickleball or address pickleball, the reality of, right now, is we treat it like any other court. You know, we have baseball batting cages in the village that put out a ping every time a ball is hit. Are we going to address those specifically? Are we going to address the noise that comes out on my recreational yard basketball court? You know, other than the noise, because when everybody's hooting and hollering, it's that same periodic noise. I mean, what it really comes down to is the type of noise, the length of noise, I mean, we get into this question of what we're really needing to focus on is, right now, it's basically thirty minutes of sustained dog barking, or thirty minutes of something. And, you know, we've never said a dog, a one-second dog bark followed by five seconds of silence and another five, you know, is, but I'm, I'm nervous about getting into a regulatory structure right now that seems to address one of many similar things, whereas I'd rather be dealing with it more on the, shall I say, commercial or club level, and then figure out a better way to do it on a individual residential level.
We also raised a really good point, which is that maybe we don't need a specific pickleball ordinance, but we need to revisit our noise ordinance, which has come up in the past. But, yeah.
Well, the other thing too, though, is, is that it's, it's also, anytime you're talking about these kinds of things, it's also, which way do you want to drive the community? I mean, that is what we're talking about. We did that when we did the light ordinance. We did that, we sat back and we said, "Hey, we're writing, we're writing ordinances to have people not put in lights. We wrote our, we rewrote our ordinances to cause people to, when they didn't, to bury their lives. We wanted them to do that. So we wrote our regulations to push in that direction." It's the same thing here, it's a question going, "Hey," everybody goes, "We want pickleball courts." Okay, well, we don't want any regulations. We don't want pickleball courts. Okay, then you probably want to do something. That's really what, I mean, that's always, in my mind, the overarching question that you talk about at any point in time when you, when you look at regulations. What do you want the community, which direction do you want them to go in?
Well, I think to Rob's point, though, if you had a pickleball court that was silent, would you care that there's a pickleball court there? So it's really the noise.
Oh, yeah.
It's not, so, it's, it's not that it's a pickleball court, or that it's a basketball court, or that it's whatever. It's the noise, and this came up with the, right, e-bikes and the, and speeding. Nobody cares that really that it's an e-bike or not an e-bike, they just don't want people going thirty miles an hour down the trails. And so I think, okay, so, let's wrap it up. We'll just do like an informal thumbs up, thumbs down. Do we want to discuss a pickleball ordinance? Okay, well, that, that's a mixed vote, but enough, so, yes. Yes, yes. Yes.
So just for the benefit of council, the city manager and I will get together and identify a future council date, and go ahead and put it on there. And then you'll see that, I think City Clerk Gillespie puts a week ahead on your agenda. So at some future date, you'll see it show up on your agenda as a study session.
And I think having the, the Centennial ordinance just as a idea would be helpful, but again, we're not, we're not even deciding that we're going to draft anything. This is a conversation about whether we want a pickleball ordinance at all, so that's.
Just for your information, I was talking to one of the councillors in Centennial. They're getting interest around the country, and even in Europe, on their ordinance.
Well, it was, I mean, it was quite a bruhaha when it happened.
I'm sorry, Mayor, can I, can I go back to my report?
Please do.
Perhaps I mistakenly said, in relation to Mr. Iverson's request, that, that when we give our reports, isn't when we discuss the issues, because we clearly just discussed the issue. And, and I'm not necessarily asking that we discuss the issue about recording the city retreat, but rather, I think what Mr. Iverson's request was, was that if anyone on council has an interest in doing that, that we discuss it. I don't personally have an interest in doing that.
Okay.
My personal belief is, just like anytime now that I write an email, which is subject to the, you know, somebody pulling it up and being, taking it out of context, anytime we record our discussions, any little thing you say can be taken out of context from that. And so it makes us, oh, I'm even a little hesitant to even say this, because this is being recorded, but I think it makes us all circumspect about what you're willing to say and not say. And I think the city retreat is a time where I do want people to get creative about thoughts of what we can and can't do in the city, and I'm not suggesting that it should be hidden under any kind of a screen, it's an open meeting, anybody can come and watch it. But there's a difference between when you're being recorded and can be misrepresented, and when you're speaking in a meeting that's not being recorded. So for that reason, I personally would not support a move in that direction, but I feel like, because we just had a discussion on that issue, we.
That's fair.
I'm, I'm putting this open if anybody wants to address it.
And I, I absolutely, one hundred percent agree with what you just said, and believe that the purpose of a retreat is to have an open dialogue. People are more than welcome to come. We've had people attend retreats in the past. It's not, there's nothing secret or secretive about the process.
In fact, Mr. Iverson has attended the retreat in the past.
Yes, he has, and so, and I also, even in the context of our study session about accessibility, I do have just technical concerns around recording day-long meetings, making those accessible to the public, and I just don't feel that that's a necessary use of city resources. No formal actions are taken at that meeting. So I also would not be in favor of moving forward to record the retreats.
I concur.
Concur. Does anyone feel differently? Okay, so I think that's absolutely fair, and thank you for bringing that up. Any reports from city staff, or chief? Yeah?
Just a shameless plug, the application process for our 2025 Citizens Police Academy opens Monday. I suspect that will fill within a few days, so early bird gets the worm on that. That's really it, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for doing that again. All right, well, if there's nothing else, then we have an executive session.
I move to go into executive session under CRS 24-6-4024B, to receive legal advice relating to 2024 state housing and land use legislation, and to adjourn the city council meeting at the conclusion of the executive session.
Second. That's been moved and seconded. It's a roll call vote.
Yep.
Councilmember Heller?
Here.
No. Oh, yes, aye. Councilmember Eber?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember McGuire?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Fisher?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, we will adjourn to executive session, or we will move into executive session and then adjourn.